Welcome tonight to the Board of Trustees work session agenda. The date is April 26th and the time is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and as usual, we can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Because this is a work session tonight, there is no public comment. So we can get going with our board presentations. And you know, prior to that, I just wanted to thank our entire Village Hall, both first floor and second floor for their help getting this agenda and board pack it out tonight. Took a lot of hard work and very lucky and fortunate to have such a great team here in Village Hall. So I thank you to everybody who helped and thank you for everyone who makes our Village Hall moving quite well. And I just wanted to say we have a lot of people working here and I'm very proud of it. So without further ado, we can begin with our board presentations. The first presentation will be the tax stabilization and contingency reserve. And that will be presented by our deputy mayor, trustee Reston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to some recent unforeseen events including the onslaught of COVID and its serious threats to our revenue generating abilities and the unexpected payout of large dollar amounts of terminal leave for a small number of Village employees. Actually, this year it was nine Village employees costing a total of $1.5 million have proven that we need to protect our operating budget as responsible trustees and stewards of the public trust in the village of Southampton. In fact, these recent terminal leave payouts exhausted the entire reserve for employee benefits, which had been allocated $300,000 annually in recent years and cost the village an additional unanticipated $130,000 in operating budget costs this year. This was a major shock to our village's budget. We, of course, will need to continue allocating to this needed reserve in the current and future budgets. This village board had taken an aggressive approach in controlling tax increases through conservative budgeting since Governor Cuomo introduced the 2% tax levy cap legislation in 2012. The village of Southampton and the prior village boards voted to pierce the tax cap every year, eight consecutive years until 2021. Kat, do you have that chart? Oh, the chart's right there. So that explains the piercing the tax cap for the last eight years. I believe that there are responsible actions for the trustees to take, which include creating policies to effectively manage our budget, which include collectively bargaining sensible yet equitable settlements with our Village employees, where these large terminal leave payouts are not incentivized. Many local jurisdictions have limited annual leave and leave payouts in a variety of equitable ways. Maybe Charlene, you could explain that a little bit about other villages or, you know, what they do.
All the municipalities.
Other municipalities.
Yeah. Well, a lot of the times it's done through collective bargaining. That's usually how it's handled. A collective bargaining agreement would have a limitation on amounts of balances that could be carried into an insulin year. For example, in East Hampton Town, we had a cap three weeks for our CSEA. And in that instance, choose or lose. And some municipalities, South Hampton has a cap on sick leave and they actually issue checks at the end of every year for any excess amounts of over that. Controls to them.
Okay, so we're a little bit behind.
Yes, but we're working. I believe that that's something that we're negotiating in our contracts moving forward.
Thank you. And of course, creating adequate budget reserves for unexpected expenditure overruns and/or revenue shortfalls. As this first step in this direction, I am proposing the creation of a village strategic reserve fund. The New York State general municipal law allows the local governments to create a contingency and tax stabilization reserve fund. The fund's purpose is to finance, and I quote, "unanticipated revenue losses" or "unanticipated expenditures" and to lessen or prevent projected increases in excess of 2.5% of the amount of real property tax levy needed to finance, unquote, the budget. The fund would be created by resolution and subject to permissive referendum. For the village, the fund could only be used upon the recommendation of the mayor and a resolution adopted by four out of five trustees. The accumulated fund cannot exceed 10% of the annual budget, which would be a number in excess of $3 million. Our village taxpayers and residents need us to create a buffer for these unforeseen events despite the competing demands of our village's resources. Additionally, and more importantly, we need to ensure that our policies and procedures are in lockstep with current realities and best practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any comments or questions from the board? And then also, Charlene, I'm not sure if we have one of our charts from our prior meeting with all of the uncompensated absences available. If not, I could summarize.
Or you mean the payout.
To payout, that's right.
Kat, that might be on a chart. There might be deals on the list. Thanks, thanks, Kat.
We can pull it up a bit later. But whenever you're ready, Kat, I'll, I have a few comments and questions. But I just wanted to take anything from the board.
I have a question. If, if revenue does dry up, it will be kind to hit. Are we being forced to then raise taxes? Because, you know, it's great to give a 0% tax increase, but if we're gonna, we could, we could refund these funds somehow. So if the market is hit, I need to be hit. So are we being forced to unfortunately raise taxes and use the tax?
Well, I believe that a tax stable, this type of reserve is, is actually one of the allowable reserves under the New York State general municipal.
No, I know, but I'm saying, how are we gonna fund it? Fund it because if, let's say, economy goes to hit, are we gonna, then we got to, are we gonna raise taxes?
Well, it's not something that would be funded. The board would make at its discretion at the end of an operating year, say, we had a million dollar surplus and say, okay, let's take $200,000 and allocate it to, you know, all of that would be based upon the board's discretion. It's subject to permissive referendum. And then the use of the funds also are the same. They're very specific. So do you remember when in 2020, when we had a serious impact on our revenues from COVID and our expenditure spiked? This is like a rainy day fund. Be able to use it. But the way that it's funded isn't, it wouldn't be an allocation annually. It would be based on the board. Board would make discretionary.
Well, we can do mid-year, it doesn't really matter.
You can do mid-year, you can do, you can bypass it one year. But basically, it's a creation of a rainy day fund and you put away a little bit here and there like a savings account.
Charlene, can I, can I jump in for a second?
Sure, Ken.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I just want to clarify, and I believe Deputy Mayor Arresta said it correctly. The creation of the, these reserve funds is subject to permissive referendum. But it's not, every transfer is not subject to permissive referendum. The transfers, though, need a super majority. And in this case, with a five-member board, you'd need four of the five members to authorize any transfer into the funds once they are established. But every transfer is not subject to permissive referendum.
Correct. Okay. Ken, what about the use of the funds? Are the, if the board decides to allocate funds, is that subject to permissive referendum as well?
No.
Okay.
I mean, where are we gonna get the new funds? I mean, Kat, if none of people can, we can't, we can't, we're not agree. We're gonna take it from, oh, the funds, or are we going to this, wait, another year until we get a budget?
Well, that's the board's discretion. The board wanted to take some money from unallocated surplus and create this, into a earmarket for the rainy day fund.
And do we have a plan? Because it was mentioned just now that we, that the fund now is, we are currently, that is, to create, to, 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 to plan to, to plan it. Because I know, obviously, we didn't hit, so where's that money coming from?
Well, we have $300,000 in the upcoming budget. Every year, we'd allocate. Yeah, $300,000 in the, in the budget. And as we have in the past four to five years, allocated that for the, to transfer to compensate absences.
And do we have any unforeseen retirements between now and possibly?
We have one retirement.
Was that, was that again?
Mr. Gray, is the dispersment of funds, this is first been from the fund requires super majority?
Yes.
Once you get the money in.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, no, not the dispersment. The transfer of the funds into the reserve account required super majority, not the expenditure.
You can spend it with this three.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Trustee McLaughlin. Kat, would you mind putting that, that chart back up? So one reason why we might want to create this fund tonight, and Deputy Mayor, I really appreciate your fiscal prudence here. In the past, I know we weren't using some of the laws of New York State to the benefit of our Village residents and taxpayer. Well, one thing that this board has been talking about at great length and another thing that has been extraordinarily frustrating as we have been frugal taxpayer dollars and very careful. Yet again, we seem to continue to be having uncompensated absences, retirement payouts, et cetera, due to contracts that this board did not create. Due to, you know, for example, if you look at this, you've got $400,000 plus thousand dollars for retirement police captain, got $125,000 to the retirement building maintenance crew leader, over $700,000 plus an additional $774,000. Essentially wiped out all this hard work that we have done, being extraordinarily frugal with taxpayer money and creating fiscally sound budgets are now gone due to the work, not of this board, but of prior boards and prior administrations and essentially not paying attention to all the collective bargaining agreements and contracts negotiated in the partners. So this is frustrating. We are trying our best here. We put together some very good budgets. But as the deputy mayor pointed out, we had year after year after year of piercing the tax gap without actually the fiscal prudence that were needed. So it's, we're very proud, obviously, to be looking out in this sort of way for the Village taxpayer and the Village resident. We hate to see the explosion of our budget that we've had in the past. And, you know, when I, when I walk around the village and I see that there's infrastructure that we don't have, for example, a sewer system, when I see the shape that our roads are in that we're gonna be repairing and now we're paving. You know, no one has paved the parking lot behind Cinderella in years. We actually took care of that and there's more coming. But it is, it is extraordinarily frustrating when we are actually paying off old contracts that we did not create at the expense of our Village taxpayer and at the expense of some of the important village infrastructure and village projects that we have. Now, we're, it is the unfortunate situation. 2005, we had about a $12 million budget. And in 2020, the last budget that was passed was a 24.5 million. That was just the tax led, it wasn't the overall budget. But again, we are, we're looking at a very tough situation. This matter right here, as far as the stabilization fund, is a step in the right direction. But this board has our work on our hands as far as the negotiation of some of our collective bargaining agreements. And so I, again, Deputy Mayor, I appreciate the work and outreach on the tax stabilization contingency reserve fund that I think at a later meeting will be important to create. But again, I'm happy to also take any additional questions from board members. And I thank you, trustee McLaughlin, for, for your comments. We obviously just passed our budget and passed the budget that froze the tax rate. And there was some reserve funds in there. We projected a building department revenue to be 1.5 million and, you know, less down from the year before. But there will become a time, as you mentioned, that if the economy does slow down, we might have a decrease in our building department revenues. Luckily, obviously, we can, unlike a business, we obviously can, we're levying on our residents, but we'd like for that levy to, to, to be stable and for our tax rate to be frozen or to go down. And that's something that our board hopes to try to achieve. But again, given some of these contracts that were responsible for some of these deals that were created well before our time here, we are not responsible. We're not even great, but we're responsible for, for paying. So trustee Seaton, I'm not sure if you had any other questions on this matter. But we can continue. But this is a, that chart that we just put up is a very important chart and that just illustrates, you know, month after month, the, you know, some of these payouts that we have. And again, trust me, we're one retirement, but there might be more. And, and that might be, that might be more again, through the contracts that we did not negotiate. But that, that might be even worse for the village. But we're in good fiscal position right now. Again, this, this reserve fund will help us there. But we hope that when we negotiate further contracts, these are some things that we, we get to avoid.
When is the predicted payout? This one, one?
I believe it's about $140,000. So it's about half of what we developed.
Okay. Nobody retired before.
So at some point, we have to, we have to pay for, for the contracts that were negotiated or in position to do so. But again, it's up to our village to, to make sure we're protecting our taxpayers. Thank you very much. So we'll continue on with our board presentations. The next is the downtown improvements. This is presented by Gary Deleski, the superintendent of the Department of Public Works. And I will introduce this. We asked Gary to, you know, put together a presentation regarding some of the improvements that we'd like to see in our, in our downtown and across our village. It's important that we get our position in our village in top shape for the upcoming summer season. And I'll turn this over to Gary. Gary, thank you very much.
Gary, are you there?
Okay, just trying to come in here. Did my share make it, Kat?
It did, you're perfect.
Okay, thank you. Good evening all. So my presentation tonight is just to show some improvements that the village is trying to make to better the quality of the downtown area. And although we've been a tourist destination, the population increase to Southampton Village in recent years has made it increasingly harder to manage our business district. And in response to this, the village board is making investments in not only infrastructure, but in additional personnel whose new focus will be in the downtown area. This new crew's initial priority will be power washing of all sidewalks, bricks and benches in the business district, picking up all garbage and debris, planting, weeding, mulching, watering flowers. And essentially just doing everything we can to keep the downtown clean. The crew will consist of two full-time employees who will work Monday to Friday from 6:00 to 2:30 and two seasonal employees who will work 6:00 to 2:30 during the week and 8:00 to 4:00 on weekends. And this should cover the downtown seven days a week for any work that arises. And of course, any extra needs that the DPW can support, we will certainly help them out as we go along. So the village had originally power watched Main Street and Jobbs Lane around Thanksgiving last year. And after receiving much positive feedback, decided to invest in our own power washing trailer. And as we move to get our new personnel in place, existing park workers will start power washing in early May to try to get through all our major streets before summer is in full swing. Parks workers have been painting over the winter and they've repaired over 100 flower boxes. And we'll begin setting them out in early May as well. And they will start planting them as the weather warms. We, of course, will encourage businesses to increase flowers, increase flower planting in front of their stores and look for opportunity to increase our plantings as well. Our highway department has also been busy. They painted over 100 garbage cans this winter, so they all look nice and shiny and new. But even though these cans are looking new, the village will start phasing in some new Big Belly containers. Gina and I had worked to get a capital improvement budget together. And we're gonna have first phase of this coming into, in June to Main Street. And then the second phase will end up being on Jobbs Lane later this summer. And because these cans take about 10 times the capacity of an original can, we should not be seeing any more overflowing garbage in the village.
But they will be strategically placed, Gary.
Yes, so we, we, we have actually, we actually have been working with Big Belly, who plotted all these cans for us on a map. But once we get them implemented, we'll be able to move them around and decide where we want to place them. Okay, also in the downtown area, we've been looking to improve our brick areas. And first, we tried out a new demo tree box on the corner of Main and Jobbs. Our highway masons use the bluestone edging. And by re-leveling the bricks, we have a higher hope to keep the mulch in place. We're also looking into a ported place surface of a similar color to keep it neater. And also, as quotes we received for leveling of all the brick areas that have been coming in well over $1 million, our masons will start doing these tree boxes and leveling bricks sort of heading toward Village Hall as time permits. But at the same time, we're gonna explore pricing from other contractors. So in addition to this, this type of work, the village is making new investments to our infrastructure. Just this week, Mohawk Field Parking was repaved and looks great. All the businesses around, they, they really were great to us too. There were no complaints and they all cooperated fully with us. So we did appreciate that. So here you can see last Monday when the lot was being milled. And on Wednesday, new paving is starting to go down. And then on Friday, our workers came in and started striping the lot to get it ready. So when school came in session this week, the lot would be ready for use. Next, we'll be looking at the West Main Street parking lot, probably this fall. We have received a DEC water quality grant, close to $1 million, to install multiple bioswells. And there will also be a section of permeable paving that you see in the brown on the left-hand side. What will be happening is is the entire parking lot will be degraded. So instead of water entering the center of the aisles, the water would then be going to the bioswells along the curb. So an illustration on the left is just generally showing you that stormwater will enter that bioswell. All the vegetation in that bioswell will take up a lot of those pollutants in their roots. And whatever they can't capture will then go into our standard drainage down below. A future one we're, we're looking at right now is gonna be in the Cameron Wall Street parking area. This new design will add several new spots. It'll provide better flow. It will clean up the appearance and provide a safe pedestrian sidewalk through the lot. We're currently in discussion on this project and we're looking at funding opportunities with our grant writer. Another project that is in contract is the improvement of the Main Street Jobbs Lane signal. This is being funded through Suffolk County Downtown revitalization grant. We are currently in contract and waiting for the county to give those contracts to us for signature. The new signal that will go in will be similar to the one at the Prospect Street location with the antique mast arm style and will include signals for pedestrian crossings as well. Finally, I wanted to mention that the Village Hall, excuse me, that the village has set aside funding for a major facelift of our Village Hall. In the fall of this year, the building is scheduled to be stripped of all paint, repainted, and will also include a component to seal the brick face. And this will hopefully bring it back to its former self. So through adding staff and spending monies in our downtown area, the village is making a substantial investment in making our downtown shine again.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. That was great. We really appreciate the presentation. Thanks to your help and thanks to the leadership of our deputy mayor, Mr. Arresta, who's the liaison to the public works department. I wanted to see if, Gina, if you had any comments or if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you, thank you so much, Gary. I mean, I don't know what my remarks could be after the meeting's over. But my trustee remarks, because I think you've covered it all. But as you can see, we've been very, very busy and I think things are really looking great. I was so excited about that parking lot that's been in such disrepair for so many years, Mohawk. But a lot of people don't know which parking lot that is. But that's the parking lot behind the stores on Hampton Road. So that, that looks great. And I had a chance myself to go use the new power washer last week when we were doing the demo. And it's, it's, it's just great. And even though we had the whole downtown done last year after the winter, they're still, they're, you get some marks. But we just, we know that during the summer months, if we just need a spot to be done, we could do a certain section that needs to be done for certain trees or dirt get on certain areas more than others. So I'm very excited about that. So the DPW's been very, very busy and you can see the fruits of their labor. So thank you very much for a great presentation, Laurie.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I, I don't know if you can hear me. Sure. I had a few questions. I did see the new power washer being used. I'm just curious, how is it powered? Is it, is it, is it electric, gas? Where's, where's the power?
It is gas-powered. We basically have two power washers set on the trailer. So to get that kind of, that kind of force, it needs to be gas-powered.
Okay, because I, my only concern was, you know, I, I was really, this was, we're working very hard to do some, you know, very, very, very roughly, finally. And it just, you know, unfortunately, I didn't know it was a gas and what, and I know it was a revolution. And it seems a bit hypocritical. It's like, you know, it seems a little critical. We're, you know, buying this machine, it's gas and we want to limit some, the use of gas and blow. So I think we, it's obviously important, you know, it is, but given the noise, is it, we have hours of usage that we're gonna be using it in terms of how often do we use?
We'll be following the village code when we're using this. So, you know, we, we, happening Monday to Friday, and we will be doing this after 7:00 o'clock generally.
Yeah, I don't want to get, you know, if, you know, I got, any, any, you know, to get, get calls from residents, you know, regardless of noise and people sleeping or whatnot. So I want to make sure that it's gonna have.
Yeah.
And as limited impact as possible. And also.
And Joe, also, you know, we need gas because if we were to get a, an electric-powered one, we would need a 220 volt and we would have to be running, you know, wires all up and down Main Street that would have that capacity. So it's really not doable.
I, I, thank you for that clarification. You know, great, thank you. And also, regardless of the hall, is anything in your budget for either this year or next year to possibly replace the windows on turf? I know there was some issue with the, there wasn't a tier of leakage. So we have, possibly, to go back, you know, years and years. Those windows are part of a plan to, when you, you can, you should also, the windows as well at some point, in my mind.
They're not budgeted for right now, but I agree with you. If you go to the second and third floors of the Village Hall, they're very outdated metal windows, aluminum windows, all need to be replaced. And then energy efficiency moving forward, we could even look at the sashes on the first floor if we want to put in insulated glass. But I don't believe that money's appropriated yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been yet. I did have a conversation with.
Yeah, it hasn't been yet. I did have a conversation with, um, him and I asked, start looking out, um, you know, seeking out and maybe moving to a multi-year plan, like first floor, second floor, third floor and work in that methodical way. Because there is quite an energy efficiency problem, you know.
And Joe, I'd also like to tell you, it's really good that we take this first step because if we bundle too many things together and the price tag gets so large, often things don't get done. So this is the first step.
I'm just, I, I just want me to be able to, sorry, that we can make sure that we're taking care of it within a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Couple of quick, uh, quick thoughts and follow-up there. And then also just wanted to, reiterate and kind of lay out some of our infrastructure improvement plans. Uh, Gary, would it be possible, uh, to go with electric? That would obviously be preferable. Or unfortunately, are we looking at the choice of either not power washing the streets? I mean, we obviously know in here wants to use, uh, gas. Uh, the question is, um, is that a choice? Uh, and I have some follow-up there as well. Obviously, uh, our board has made a commitment, uh, to purchasing, you know, new electric vehicles and replacing the gas vehicles. I know, Joe, we had a very healthy, uh, debate about some of the police vehicles. I mean, one of the, the gas vehicles because you thought they were, you know, better. I was obviously pushing for the electric vehicles. Um, but I, I know you had, you, but I'd like to, you know, guess hear from Gary about, you know, whether, um, if the electric was a choice, I would love to go, uh, electric if that's possible.
I would defer to the electricians if we explored this further, but I, I think you'll, you'll say that, uh, using a 220 volt is what generally what electric power washers are. And the length of run of the wire down the street would be very large, uh, copper wire, uh, very expensive. Um, I don't really think it's a feasible solution for the village. Um, we could explore it, but I, I, I think the answer is going to be it's just not feasible to do yet.
So are we looking at power washing versus not power washing or? If that, if we didn't want to use gas?
At, uh, at this point, yes. Uh, I'm not aware of, of anything we could use there. They do have two 20 power washers. Uh, but in the size that we would need, uh, to do the downtown, um, you could put an outlet in a village hall. You could put one in at the Chamber of Commerce. You know, you can do certain selections. But the longer that wire, uh, you know, the, the larger the wire will have to be, uh, and I just don't think it's feasible to do. Uh, but engineer and electrician, we could look into.
All right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I do have one last question for you. Um, in terms of the placement of the, uh, hot deli, uh, new, new direction, I'm, I'm assuming that we're working on placing them in front of the, uh, cafes and restaurants, i.e., uh, Sean's Place or other delis. Yeah, key shop and, and Golden Paris, would that, would that be correct? Because I would think those areas would be the most usable in terms of the refuge.
Many of, many of them are put in front of eateries and or locate, located near crosswalks. Um, Gina and I do have a, a map that we can share with you. I don't have it available tonight, but I'd be happy to send that to you tomorrow for you to look at.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, well, uh, a quick, a quick recap here. Deputy Mayor, thank you again for your leadership here and outlining some of these major, uh, infrastructure improvements that we'd like to see, uh, in our village downtown. Gary, uh, thank you very much for the, uh, the presentation. Uh, I'm actually quite, uh, impressed by your, uh, your skills making the, uh, the deck. So thank you. Uh, and thank you to, uh, you know, your, your team, uh, your public works team, uh, department heads, uh, you know, Steve Phillips from the, uh, Parks Department, uh, who, uh, helped, uh, take a, a leadership role here and, and the men and women who helped, um, you get this done. I know that there's some people who are very excited about, uh, joining this group in the downtown. We had a little bit of a preview earlier on and now we're seeing some of the items that are to come to fruition. So, uh, just to, just to summarize, um, you know, number one, the blue stone edging around the trees, I think is, in a pilot we did, looked incredible, uh, with some of the brown mulch. So I think that's a nice, uh, new addition that we're going to be adding to the downtown. Uh, we actually have some of the best masons on Long Island. We're on our, uh, highway department. So we're looking forward to, uh, working with them and leveraging, uh, the valuable skills that they have. And, you know, they're excited, uh, to get to work on, uh, on some of these projects. Uh, we do have also additional funds in the trustee special projects fund. So when we talk about village hall, which has been neglected for, uh, upwards of a decade, if not more, uh, it is time to, uh, revamp village hall, strip that paint, replace it. Uh, I, I've got, uh, a little bit of vision of, of, uh, putting some additional work in, obviously, sealing those windows, improving the third floor of village hall and then also laying some new stone, uh, and railing out in front. Uh, this is developed in Southampton, so we should have a, a village hall, uh, that, uh, that suits it. Uh, and, and I think we're, we're all very excited about that. The traffic lights that we received grant money for, thank you. That's a great job. Uh, thank you to everyone involved in that. Uh, just another small step forward in the improvements, uh, of our downtown. Uh, the Mohar Field paving. Thank goodness, uh, we're extremely, uh, excited about that. We know our residents are going to be thrilled, uh, when they, uh, when they go to the various businesses off Hampton Road and the parking lot in the back. Uh, believe it or not, this was something that we said we were going to do, uh, and we did it. Obviously there's more work to be done. Um, also, uh, I just want to applaud our board, uh, and, uh, our public works department and Jen Messian on our, then our mental community, uh, regarding the, uh, West Main Street, uh, bio swells and parking lot. That's going to be the first step forward in repairing that parking lot, which is in desperate need of repair. Again, neglected for over a decade and a half. Uh, we're, we're happy, uh, to step in there and help, uh, help improve that. And the bio swales are also going to help as far as, uh, preventing rotor off, uh, from getting into, uh, uh, Lake Agawam, uh, and other, uh, water bodies, um, that, uh, that may be adjacent. Uh, so that's, uh, that's fantastic. And it's also going to allow us to, um, uh, to repave that parking lot this fall. I wish we could even do it sooner. Uh, but the public should know that it is coming. And then also we've got, um, some, uh, environmental and, uh, carbon, uh, neutral, uh, type, uh, of, of achievements as far as the solar powered garbages that we'll be using. We would like also to work with, uh, Bob Hand, who's done a great job as the head of building maintenance. While we make our improvements to village hall, we'd like to also include some solar power in village hall. Uh, we've got those electric charging stations. I actually saw you today, Gary, outside fixing, uh, one of the, uh, machines. So we have, um, I was since, it's unfortunate that we still have to use gas for some things, uh, but between, uh, a fleet of electric vehicles, uh, solar powered garbages, uh, improvements, solar power in village hall, uh, we are making great headway. Um, I wish it could be sooner, but, um, at least we are taking those, those steps forward. And then the Cameron, uh, Wall Street parking lot, again, more good work here. So it's, uh, it's great to, um, see some of these positive changing, changes taking place after, uh, again, a, a, a decade of just, uh, seeing our infrastructure crumble and not making investments in our infrastructure. And then I also, Gary, would love to work on some of the small things. Uh, I would love to see, uh, every single, uh, crosswalk painted, uh, this spring. Um, and also, um, and I was speaking to the highway department today, uh, striping some of the parking lots as well. And then we'll continue our, uh, our paving efforts. We've got a resolution later in our agenda tonight, uh, with, uh, you know, 1.2, uh, billion dollars of roadwork, uh, funds that we have, uh, received. So again, Gary, thank you very much. Very impressed by the presentation. Thank you to all the public works department, department heads, building maintenance, central garage, parks, highways, et cetera. Uh, sorry for that long-winded overview here, but, um, very excited by this and very happy that this board, um, led by, uh, a trustee rest as our, our public works liaison is making headway in all these areas. We're going to keep on moving, uh, forward with, uh, with this progress. So yeah, thank you. Uh, again, don't know if there's any other comments from the board, but, uh, yeah, and great, great presentation, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, the next part of our, our public meeting tonight is the communications to the board. We've got two communications. Charlene, I'll let you summarize those. They're also going to hack it, I believe, on the village website. Uh, first is the correspondence from Michael Zinder, 36 Pulaski Street. The second is the correspondence from Warren, Parato, Brato, sorry, Lauren, uh, and the Halsey Net Coalition. Charlie, I'll let you summarize those.
Yes, uh, Mayor of the Village Board received an email from Michael Zinder, 36 Pulaski Street. Um, Mr. Zinder, um, wanted to communicate to the board that he is opposed to, um, some of the, um, apparently there's been some talk, uh, it's heard through the grapevine, uh, that some folks on Pulaski Street may be making a motion or trying to, um, start a petition to remove the no parking signs. And, um, as a resident of the street, he opposes to this, um, movement. Um, there is also a letter from Lauren in Colorado and the Halsey Net Coalition. Um, they are, um, requesting that the surf schools, uh, be moved to another location other than Halsey Neck Beach. Um, and, uh, there is a, um, two or three page letter and packet, um, and built on the website, uh, indicating that, uh, possible solutions and, um, problems with the, uh, surf school at that location.
And this is, you know, definitely, who is, yeah, this, this is, yeah.
Excuse me?
Do we, do we know who's, uh, who's, uh, who's a school? Do you know who's doing this school?
Um, no, but actually the surf schools, um, we don't do a bid for it. Uh, there's applications that are sent in. Um, I believe, um, there has been one correspondence for requesting an application.
Okay, that, that's probably my, yeah.
Right. I haven't seen them yet. And when they, when they are, they'll be sent it to the board for.
Yes, he, this, he, that company, whoever it is, he wants to, we should discuss them.
Well, generally the application actually lists, um, requested locations, which each locations they request. And then, um, it's, uh, the board, you know, depending on how many, uh, applications we get, the board would be able to, the board, board's discretion to grant permission.
I think that's the same word, right?
Yes.
Some theoretical. So. Can't remember where it is, but. Get to them.
As, as yet we have not had a submission.
Okay.
Uh, the surf committee actually, uh, two years ago did a really nice job on putting together a formula for the surf schools. Uh, so we're looking forward to, uh, to bringing that back. Uh, they, uh, created certain rules as far as the number of students in each, uh, surf school. Uh, certain uniforms, uh, for those who are attending the surf school. And of course, the permitting, uh, process and regulation, uh, as to kind of who will get the permits to participate in those surf schools. But we're looking forward to speaking with the residents of, uh, Halsey Neck as well as the, uh, surf schools, that we can do something that's fair for both the residents and the, uh, young men and women who want to, uh, learn how to, uh, surf and, and, uh, be outdoors. So, uh, thank you very much. Not sure if there's any other questions or comments from the board. Okay, Charlie, I'll turn this over to you regarding suggested resolutions.
Mayor? Resolution number one resolved that the claims for the warrant dated April 26th, 2022, totaling $302,763. Dash eight dash fifteen general fund, $76,179.94 warrant, H19 capital fund, $2,124.39 warrant, A16 utilities, utilities warrant and $1,025 warrant, P19 trust fund to be audited and approved. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Resolution number two resolved that the reading of the minutes for the public session of April 12th, 2022 is accepted as filed by the village clerk and the actions taken at that meeting are hereby ratified and approved. So a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three resolved board trustees approves the temporary closure of Narrow Lane for Southampton High School commencement ceremony on Friday, 24th, 2022, randy on June 25th, on 5:00 PM, 9:30 PM. So a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number four resolved the board trustees approves the appointing following individuals to serve as election inspectors for village election on June 17th, 2022, operating the hours of 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM effective April 26th, 2022. Diane Fisher, chairperson, $25 an hour. Jenny Thon and Jerry, chairperson, $25 an hour. Roseanne Griffin, $20 an hour. Helen Reeves, $20 an hour. Danny Stevens Smith, $20 an hour. Arthur Nation, $20 per hour. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five, whereas board trustees adopted presentation 2022 dash H24 on April 12th, 2022, approving the town of Southampton Community Preservation and Water Quality Improvement Program. Support, so, to support estimated project costs associated with the following projects. West Main Street Bio Swells, 246,729. Generally based to stormwater mitigation, Old Town Pond dredging design implementation, 4,161,597. Lake Agawam algae harvesting, Old Town Pond watershed bio swell, 741,107. Wicca Pond watershed bio swell, 300, for $405. And Phillips Pond watershed bio swell, $282,040. Now therefore be resolved that board, the village of Southampton hereby amends the resolution as follows. Brand resolution number one, West Main, Main Street Bio Swells, 246,729. Will be funded through a match from New York State DEC in the amount of $986,916. WQIP grant and Southampton Village, um, 123,364 dollars for design engineering. Uh, project number two, grant, uh, generaling base to stormwater mitigation will be removed as no application was submitted. Will not be moved forward. And resolution, uh, number three, Old Town Pond, dredging design implementations, 4,161,597 dollars, uh, will be, uh, will be a village match in the amount of $90,000 dollars for engineering study. Uh, number four, Lake Agawam algae harvesting, $5,363,600. 563,600 dollars total project cost with a village match of 1,340,009 dollars. Wicca Pond watershed bio swell, $235,113. Phillips Pond watershed bio swell, $194,608, which, well, um, have a total village match of 1,554,264 dollars, which shall be funded through the water quality capital reserve. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
My second.
You have a quick discussion as well.
Is that, um, the street entire, yeah, yeah, three million dollars?
No, there's.
Sorry, I, I, I'd like to.
Okay, sure.
Uh, please go ahead, Sarah.
There's actually 3.7 million dollars that's been allocated and some of these project costs which were already approved and, uh, have been funded through there, like Old Town Pond dredging. Um, uh, so basically I believe, um, after this and the prior allocation, it's the dollar worth 0.5 million and.
Now I also would like to add a, a few things. Uh, the first thing is that we are actually not, uh, funding all of these projects. We are applying for grants. So in the case that we do receive all of these grants, we're talking upwards of, you know, 10, uh, you know, million dollars of, of, uh, of, of grants here. Uh, that would be fantastic. You know, I hope that we receive these grants, uh, but that will be, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see when we get there. Uh, but again, this is not, we're not extending this money today. Uh, we are simply just, uh, determining what a match would be if we were to be so lucky, be rewarded for all of these grants. The second thing I will say is that, uh, when I first took office, uh, we, uh, had next to no, uh, shovel-ready projects. And then we have spent the last, uh, two and a half years or so making sure that we have a long list of shovel-ready projects for projects that are ready for design. I mean, we have never applied for this many grants before. Uh, typically you would see West Hampton Village come in, West End and Beach Village come in, and they would take the lion's share of all the CBF WQIP money. Uh, hopefully those days are over. Uh, we said that we'd fight very hard for our village residents. Uh, and we are applying for, uh, a large chunk of these, uh, WQIP grants. We hope we get them. These are incredible projects that will improve, uh, surface water, groundwater and, uh, address, uh, non-point source pollution of the rotor off, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and we aren't just focusing on Lake Agawam. We are focusing on Old Town Pond. We are focusing on Wicca Pond. We are focusing on Built. We are covering it all. Uh, we also have a college-wide, um, water quality improvement plan that this board, uh, has, uh, stood behind. Uh, we have never had that before. And in the past, we applied for grants. We sometimes will get them because various agencies, whether it was the DEC and the Southampton Town, uh, CBF would say, well, you don't have a, um, a water quality plan. So we actually created that. That goes part and parcel with the, uh, New York State DEC health logicle plan that would create a. That would create a Lake Agawam, which is the first one on the house. So we have just continued uh to accomplish uh more and more uh on all fronts. We talked about our crumbling infrastructure that we're solving earlier with Gary, and now we're talking about uh water quality that has really been addressed in history of the village. Now we're going right at it. If you can see all these, all these grants. Now, I will also say that we don't actually have to pay for all this in the case that we were awarded these grants. That would be a fantastic day, but we could also go to other sources, uh, such as federal earmarks, and we can go to the private sector. Uh, for example, uh, there are some residents by Old Town Pond that have expressed interest in helping uh to contribute. Uh, we spoke with, uh, you know, the environmental committee, and, and maybe we may be able to use uh the uh, uh, other nonprofits uh in order to contribute to some of these projects. And then we also have the Lake Agawam Conservancy, which has also been helping uh fund some of these environmental projects like they did uh last year. The only thing I will say, Charlene, is uh regarding the West Main Street Bio Squalls, which Gary has presented, number one, two hundred forty six. To what extent is that the village match? And then to what extent could we actually use trustee special projects, uh, to fund that? Uh, this way we leave a little extra money in the uh water quality.
Village matches one hundred and twenty three thousand.
Okay. Is that a possibility uh to use uh the um, the trustee special project line item? That's actually a national rap. Hey, uh, or uh, you know, what's uh, what is our option here? I mean, it's fine if we wanna use the uh, the water quality fund that we set up.
I don't, I don't, I do not think we have that much left in here in, in um, of these special projects.
Okay.
What is the, the amount of, the cost of the project is here in forty six, seven, twenty nine, and New York State D E C grant is nine hundred and eighty six.
But the nine eighty six is actually um for more than just that project.
There's gonna be a bunch left over that we have to figure out what we want.
Right, so just, it, 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 it's a very delicate dance that Jen does with these brands and how she uses the match.
I also wanted to thank the D E C. This is quite, uh, quite the grant, nine hundred eighty six thousand dollars uh that we, that we earned. Um, that's quite substantial. I know in two thousand nineteen, um, when I was first, you know, getting here, uh, we didn't even apply for the D E C. Uh, now we're, now, now it's the opposite. Now we're saying, how are we gonna match uh all these grants that we're getting? So uh, we've gone from one extreme, uh, well, not, we actually haven't gone, actually, we went from one extreme of not applying. And now we're actually looking at really great grants that were awarded. If you actually drive uh down, um, uh, down, uh, down Gin Lane to the bathing corp, you'll see a nice sign to the D E C that they. Uh, that we are awarded money for that as well, uh, from New York State, uh, regarding some green and gray infrastructure that we, oh, there, or some, some uh runoff as well. So uh, it's a good effort here. I was just, um, hoping that, you know, to use some of the trustee special project money, um, or money from. Uh, this next budget that will begin next fiscal year. It's okay if we use the one twenty three thousand from the water quality.
As we communicate, aren't, yeah, the town trustees, you know, they have their, their, well, we, we, yeah, our, our.
I, I, I believe that that's, I believe that that's done through the application process, since to C P F, and I think anything water quality that has to do with it, they are a matter of there.
I also spoke with um, with Ed Warner, uh, last week. Uh, Scott Harwitz is now the president, so I'll reach out to Scott as well. I spoke to Ann Welker. Um, and uh, you know, I'm in good communication with the town trustees. We have a, wrote a good relationship and we're very happy to work with them. They're actually helping sponsor some other projects like that we have, such as the Women Lane Bio Swell. That isn't on this list, so we're actually working hand in hand with the town trustees. Uh, so they've been a great resource and ally for us, and uh, we're very proud of our really strong relationship we have with the town trustees as well.
So on the resolution, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, so can we amend this uh at a later date if we wanted to use trustee special project money? Okay, aye. Thank you.
Uh, resolution number six resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator to issue a request proposal for consultants. Through experience in historic preservation to conduct an architectural Renaissance survey targeting areas adjacent to Southhampton Village. Historic history and in the village of Southampton. And then expanded. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just want, but this, um, anyway, we, we are, we.
Yes.
Another, uh, I wanna thank the R B, another, another great, uh, great project that we're gonna be working on. Um, to help uh preserve the historical integrity of the village. Uh, so I just wanted to thank the R B there as well, and looking forward to getting some of these R P's in.
Resolution number seven, resolved the Board of Trustees approves the refund request, we are refund request for the Southampton Village Building Department pertaining to a site plan review. Paying the amount of eight hundred dollars for C P V, stop that. Uh, for small interior space alteration, which is no longer required to go. Are, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight, whereas the village board has, has a fully executed contract with C and S, E C, over E B A National Grid. In exchange for the village performing restoration work on multiple roadways, National Grid has provided the village with pretty separate checks totaling one point two million dollars. And whereas the village has received payment from National Grid according to agreement, and is now ready for the road restoration work. Now therefore be resolved, Board Trustees directs finance department on budget modifications. Um, increased expenditure, H five one one two, two hundred utility deposit roadwork in the amount of one million two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred seventy six dollars and twenty five cents. Increased revenue from utility deposit roadwork, the amount of one point two million, one point two, two hundred seventeen, one million two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars and forty five cents. Um, this was actually security deposit revenue that we have received. Um, for for the clarification of what members, um, and we uh have allocated this money whenever there's any utility work that's gone on a road. Um, they actually dig up the road and make some improvements to the utilities, to the underground utilities. Uh, they're, they're required to, you know, to post a bond with us. The money is held in a security deposit account. Um, words, the utility work has been done, and the D P W Department now wants to use this money and use it for paving streets as part of the gaming plan. So that's basically the budget modification accomplished. It is not using any taxpayer dollars. It's money that's provided from utility.
And didn't they also repair the sidewalk?
Um, I'm not sure, but I could check with them. Um, so, um, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, Board of Trustees directs finance department to make ongoing budget modification and transfer from building maintenance equipment in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. To street lighting equipment and repair in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number ten, Board Trustees directs finance department to make following budget modification, a transfer from police clothing in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. To police equipment line in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, the next two resolutions are resolutions made that we discussed, um, regarding the compensated access payout. Um, first one, um, I will read both resolutions, but one of them is allocating funds from the, the benefits, or the other compensated access. Just in the previous budget, um, to meet these, or to pay out what we paid in the last fiscal year. Resolution number eleven, resolve the Board of Trustees directs finance department to make following budget modification, increase expenditure. Um, police personnel in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, of building maintenance. Uh, personnel in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, safety inspection, personal service, uh, salaries, personal salaries. Services in the amount of thirty eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, ninety two cents. Um, with an allocation of appropriation of reserve in the amount two hundred and seventy eight, one, eight hundred and eighty two dollars and ninety two cents. Is there a motion?
Uh, m- motion, and I'll just.
Second.
It, it surely may, you may have said appropriation of reserve, yeah, even revenue, just, just so I make sure we get the resolution right.
It should be res, reserve.
Reserve, so thank you.
Yes.
Is your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve, resolved that the Board of Trustees directs finance department to make following budget modification. A transfer from compensated access is the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. To police personnel services in the amount of eight thousand dollars, village or personal services in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Fire department personnel services, the amount of thirty one thousand dollars, D P W personal services, the amount of forty one thousand dollars. Trustee personal services, the amount of three thousand dollars, mayor personal services, the amount of sixty two hundred dollars. Assessment personal services, the amount of six hundred dollars, safety inspection personal services, the amount of forty eight thousand dollars. Street maintenance personal services, the amount of six thousand dollars, parks personal services, the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, cultural personal services, the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Um, A R P personal services, the amount of five thousand dollars, and central garage personal services, the amount of twenty two dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I think.
Good discussion. I, I, I'm just looking at this, and it's just, it is painful, uh, to have to do this. And again, I just wanna applaud our, our board for taking the necessary steps that we need, we need to do here, uh, to clean up, uh, some of the mistakes that have been made in the past. Uh, we are working so hard with great budgets, uh, that reduce taxes, freeze taxes, and also invest in our infrastructure. At the same time, uh, we are just continuing, uh, to fix mistakes and, um, you know, obviously someone has to do it, uh, but uh, it is, it's painful. I'm, I'm, I'm a simple yes on this, but it's not something that, we, we have, we have to do this, uh, but unfortunately, uh, you know, we have to clean up and also continue to improve.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just, I, I, being on budget and finance, I have to make a comment about this because I, I said to Charlene before, what are all these numbers, all these numbers now that we're putting? Uh, this just is, is another indication of being clear, transparent, and on budget, you know, exactly. What, what, one item, everything is going to, and I just love seeing the breakdown. I just consider that one big number. Uh, that we always had in the past. So, uh, thank you, Charlene, and, and thank you to you, uh, um, uh, for putting it, uh, the resolutions this way. And I think this, we're gonna be doing this moving forward. So it's all about being transparent, and here's a very big. And again.
Resolution number thirteen, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the Long Island Chapter of Surf Rider, and was this twenty twenty two, least super group Southampton Beach is clean up on Saturday. May fourteen, twenty twenty two, from twelve P M to two P M. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, resolution number fourteen, whereas Board of Trustees adopted resolution twenty twenty two, six oh one, on November twenty twenty two. Approving the third annual Juneteenth ceremony to be held at Agawam Park on June nineteenth at ten A M. Now for, therefore be resolved, the Board Trustees hereby mend the resolution. Um, to read as follows, third annual Juneteenth ceremony will be held at Agawam Park on Saturday, June eighteen, twenty twenty two, at ten A M. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifteen, Board of Trustees approves a request from Zane Maddick, life scout of, life scout of Boy Scout Two Fifty Eight Southampton. To construct an osprey nest on the ocean side of June Beach as the acceptable location is for Eagle Scout project. Your motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number sixteen, resolve that Board of Trustees accepts the letter of resignation from Miranda Weber, Secretary Assistant to the Mayor effective April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two.
Motion.
Second?
Second. Guess we're not letting her retire. Sorry.
I'll do.
A quick discussion. I have, I just wanted, I have a um proclamation that I wanted to uh present uh to Miranda. Uh, she does a great job doing proclamations, except this one she, she couldn't do herself. Uh, and, and she's done a whole lot, uh, more. Uh, so, um, I'd like to just quickly read this, and I'll, I'll preface by saying that this doesn't even come close to. Uh, discussing and resolving uh what she has accomplished and done for the village of Southampton. Uh, but I'll, I'll start by reading this, and it says, the following proclamation is presented to Miranda Weber on this twenty sixth day of April, two thousand twenty two. Uh, whereas Miranda, uh, a energetic, uh, wide-eyed, uh, individual came to the village of Southampton. Various places via Germany, uh, to join the Southampton village staff as the mayor's assistant and much more on November ninth, two thousand twenty. And whereas she served in her capacity as assistant to the mayor, in addition to acting as a liaison to the village administrator, or the trustees, and to the public. And whereas Ms. Weber put in countless hours and dedicated her time to assisting with the distribution of public testing information, P P E. And, and others regarding ongoing pandemics. And whereas Ms. Weber initiated the village's new online quality life app, See Click Fix. And whereas Ms. Weber sacrificed much of her free time and worked long days and nights at village hall to ensure that she was present to assist. Self and the administration, anyway needed, as well as the public. And whereas Ms. Weber has left a lasting impression on the countless village residents whose lives she has touched with her always kind and genuine assistance. And whereas her pleasant, welcoming, and ever helpful demeanor towards the village residents and coworkers will be greatly missed. Therefore, we, uh, the mayor and the Board of Trustees of the village of Southampton, wish to express our gratitude to Miranda Weber for her service. And wish her success and happiness in all of her future successful endeavors. Here we go. Oh, I will, um, uh, leave this here for, uh. It's all right, energy. Okay, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number seventeen, uh, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the hiring of McKay Davis. Uh, as a member of the twenty twenty two seasonal police staff, a returning member at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour. That starts, starting with this employee, each employee, different according to their job responsibility and availability. Um, and he will be sworn in for his employment. Um. Or do you have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eighteen, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village authorized village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing. Be held Tuesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, at six P M as a hybrid slash in-person Zoom meeting. Regarding local law nine dash twenty twenty two, proposal to amend the village code by adding the New York State meeting law required. Starting video conferencing. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nineteen, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton, authorize the village administrator to publish the public hearing to be held on Thursday, May twelfth, twenty twenty two. At six P M as a hybrid in-person slash Zoom meeting regarding local law six dash twenty twenty two. Proposal to amend the village code to add a rental registry law, more specifically to implement the registry information process for village residential properties within the village. Building Department slash Land Use Department originally tabled on April twelfth, twenty twenty two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty, resolve that Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorize village administrator to publish the notice of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. At six P M as a hybrid in-person slash Zoom meeting regarding local law ten dash twenty twenty two. Proposal to amend the village code to get home furnishings, showrooms in the highway business district, village business district with special exception use. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
With discretion, um, where are the organizers?
I believe Alex, did Alex, uh, want to distribute this?
Uh, this was, okay, so I, I know this was distributed, uh, and, and discussed, uh, with, uh, with the board. But, uh, the genesis of this, uh, was that, uh, we had, uh, a, uh, a land use attorney come to us. And, uh, expressed that our, uh, highway, uh, business district zoning, uh, was, uh, was out of date. In fact, there's many things in our code that are greatly out of date, are, and, uh, and in order to allow for, uh, more appropriate uses. Uh and uh and in order to allow for uh more appropriate uses. Uh we're. Uh to amend our um our highway business district portion of uh chapter one sixteen of our village code. If you look at our highway business district zoning, uh there's not much there. It allows for nightclubs, which I know that many village residents do not want, though. Uh they're better in highway business than they are in residential communities. Uh it also uh allows for various. Uh gas stations, which Joe, I know you do not like, and um also other types of of out of date uses that are just no longer. Really relevant in the village. So uh this is a a small modification that I think will help uh help our village out and um. We'll be able to have that uh discussion in a public hearing.
I do recall at the time, since I've worked on this, so I don't know about. There's an overlay. For NOS road. I think back in. So I encourage Alex, look at the documents if they exist. Where they are and uh.
But what happened to the um, I was actually, I was quite interested in the really district. You know what happened to that or?
It was before my time, so I think I I would.
So on the motion, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes the resolution.
Thank you very much. So uh there's no appointments tonight. Uh we'll move to uh comments from board members. Uh we'll start with the trustee arrested.
Well, Gary stole my thunder battle. Yes, I am. So uh first I'd like to um. The, I just wanted to mention that this uh month, well, not this Monday, but Monday, May ninth. Uh from noon to nine P M, uh the Rotary is holding their annual spaghetti dinner. It's gonna be held at the um. Southampton Inn. It's gonna be all day and the funds that they use are is for their scholarships that they give out to the. Uh the high school, thanks Kat, uh to the graduating uh seniors at the high school. So it's uh something that's fun that. They didn't do this for New Year's and uh hope um to put that on your calendar. I'd say I'd like to um have a picture now for that for good cause to help uh the students in the high school. Uh and uh the only other thing I'd like to mention is uh Miranda, you will. I'm happy for you, but it's it's bittersweet because I'm gonna miss you so much. You've been such an asset and hope to me and. You're such a a big part of what goes on here in uh the little ball, but I know you're moving on to bigger and greater things and uh. Which takes a lot of guts to do what you're gonna do also. So I just wanted my heartfelt thank you. You know, best to you.
Thank you, uh trustee Arista, uh trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone's efforts and hard work. The plans are quite exciting for the downtown improvement. So I want to take this time to thank you so very much. And of course, I would like to take this time to thank Miranda. You have been pleasant professionally, you've always done excellently, abundantly above all that we've hoped or asked for. You made a great impact to all the departments and I'm sure that all would agree with me. Thank you, thank you so very much for your great contribution. And we wish you well. And please don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown, uh trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. Yeah, um I too want to uh thank Gary for the conversation. I look forward to. And this downtown crew, I hope that uh that was all the issues of uh. Of downtown, I think it will, so I I would all, because all the crew down, the new crew. That's what I'm saying, um, and before you say it in progress. Um I also want to um send my condolences to the Reiner family. It has to me to this Patty Reiner who uh. Has it this last week at ninety-five, um he, her wife, and of course, someone who was. One of the pillars of this community for her, her wife, I was fortunate enough to attend. The services and of course, uh a lot of stories are shared and and uh her family, I wanna send my condolences to them and uh. Of course, uh um she'll be missed. And um of course, lastly, thank you Miranda and um, you know. You were one of my first hires as trustee, um so um. Uh that's a walk to you and your future endeavors and um. That's all I have for the season, so thank you.
Trustee Stevenson, you're uh.
Thank you. Uh one of the most enjoyable parts about being a trustee is getting to know um. So many new people, citizens come to us with their uh questions. And requests for information. Uh certainly broaden my my base of of people within the village. But also the all the great people in village hall who really work so hard uh to make the village a special place. Uh we heard from some of them tonight, and Gary Gilleski and and the partner for the works, what they're doing to get the village. Uh looking perfect for our busy summer season. But tonight, I really just wanted to say thank you to Miranda. When I became a trustee, I didn't really know my way around. She was so helpful, uh always had a great sense of willingness to help, a sense of calm, a sense of kindness. And uh overall, just a sense of the fishes. And uh those traits will do her so well, whatever she chooses to do. I know she's very successful. I will miss you. Also very much. Thank you. And um and to the citizens of the village, I look forward to getting even more as we move forward. Making Southampton a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. Wanted to uh wanted to echo uh the thoughts of uh trustee McLaughlin regarding uh extending my. Uh deepest condolences and sympathies to the Reiner family. Um it's a great family, uh Patsy Reiner, why I had the um privilege to get to know. Uh was someone who always put a smile on my face uh when I saw her. Uh I would enjoy seeing her at uh Moses Park, which I know she enjoyed and. Um such a long-standing uh incredible village family and um she will also, you know, she will be deeply missed. Um in Southampton Village and uh you know, she was one of the people for uh her very long, almost uh. Uh very long time on this earth that made the village special, so I'm just wanted to extend my condolences to the Reiner family and just McLaughlin. Uh thank you. For uh for your kind words as well. On a more positive note, uh we are, will be next meeting be approving the uh Our Lady of the Ham- Hampton's Field Day. It's something we do every spring, so that's very exciting. Looking forward to seeing some of the students out there. Uh and then to recap, uh our meeting, uh we are getting a lot of things done. Um. Uh I wish uh things would take even a less period of time, but you know, I'm proud of the continued progress and achievements that we are that we're making. Um personally, uh I'm never satisfied enough by what we can do for the village, uh but I know that what we are doing. Uh will be extremely helpful for our residents and business owners and uh and it will be uh long-lasting in their um. In their stature uh moving forward. So I thank you to this board for your help. Thank you, David May, for your help in some of those infrastructure and downtown improvements. And lastly, of course, I'd like to wrap this up by thanking uh Miranda uh who uh came in. Uh at a very difficult uh time, uh right when we were still figuring out uh the pandemic, which. Uh and and she came in and she stepped up in every which way, uh whether that's helping uh crafting. Uh legislation, helping any single resident with whatever he or she needed. I cannot tell you uh the number of village residents. Who um were just so happy with uh the work that Miranda did for them. Uh she also worked tirelessly on uh the Pierce Concert Action Committee. Um and that is a project that we're looking to accomplish. Just did everything that she possibly could. Uh she e- essentially uh just made everybody. Uh feel good about uh about what they're doing and helped every single person, uh whether it was part of her job responsibility or not. Uh she did everything. And I can certainly say that it will be uh impossible. Uh to uh replace her. Um we just hope that we can, you know, find somebody uh who can come in. Uh and uh and and uh you know, get the get the job done, which they will, but but uh there these are, uh will be impossible shoes to fill. So I am uh extraordinarily indebted to uh to Miranda for uh her service to the village, for her help to me. Personally, in 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 my role as mayor, I could not have done uh everything that we have accomplished without her. Um there was just never a um a moment, I mean, she did everything. I mean, she watched every sway, it would be in Z B A and planning work meeting. I mean, she knew, uh she knows everything uh going on here and um I don't think there's a single person out there that has a better grasp on. What's going on here than Miranda. So I'm I'm proud of the fact that we had the opportunity to work together. Um I know that she is headed for uh big things in uh the industries that she chooses to participate in. And um I just wanted to uh wish her uh the very best of luck, which she does not need. Uh but uh we'll do so anyway. And um I'm looking forward to uh reading about her ten years from now and seeing. Uh all the great things that she's going to accomplish. So uh thank you very much, uh Miranda. You just, you you got the job done. Um and uh I know uh a lot of residents will uh. Will will have have the same exact thing to say. So thank you very much. Uh so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion uh to adjourn to executive session. Uh for the purpose of uh discussing meeting orders. All in favor?
Aye.